Mr. McGregor's out there.
Well, he's so busy.
I know, but I'm not expecting one of you to like this.
We're putting on the record.
Waiting on this guy.
All right, perfect. Oh, for that.
Well, we'll tell. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Wednesday March twelfth, twenty twenty five school committee meeting. We will stand for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is our first full committee meeting. Bow to Jennifer. Keep her in our thoughts as we navigate this. She really was a special person and certainly navigated the personalities in this room quite well. So she is certainly not forgotten and we hold her in our hearts as we do her family and all those suffering around here. So if we could take a moment of reflection. I thank you all. Item one four, I will consider a motion to enter into executive session under R I G L section forty two dash forty six dash five eight two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Excellent. We'll vote for your roll call.
All right.
And the chair will go last.
Yes. Susan Chase?
Yes.
Amy Glaser?
I.
Mark Glaser?
I.
Mike Rocha?
Aye.
And Travis Soddy?
Aye. On the motion carries, we are entered into executive session. So.
Thank you all for your patience. I would like to reconvene in open session and notify that there were no votes taken in executive session, and I will consider a motion to seal the minutes of executive session. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
Minutes are sealed. carries five zero. Consent agenda. I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. However, I do know there were some documents attached. Did everyone in the committee have a chance to review those documents? That being said, I will look for a motion to approve items four one to four nine under the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Sue, can you hand me the clipboard for public? I'll go ahead. Excellent. So we have two folks on the public input. Item five one. Robert Shiardea.
Yes, sir.
Carradine.
Yes, sir.
Carr.
Say it again, sir.
Carradine.
Carradine. Thank you.
Robert Carradine from Westerly is going to have his three minutes. Just state your name, address, and Carolyn will start the clock.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the committee. I'd like what I'm going to discuss to be placed on a future agenda. It's not an agenda item tonight. A federal judge invalidated the Biden administration's attempted illegal hijacking of Title IX on January ninth. Then President Trump signed two executive orders restoring Title IX to its original intent, which was to protect citizens, especially our girls, against discrimination based on sex, not gender identity. Those EOs which are now federal law keep biological males out of female sports and private spaces, eliminate the mandated use of pronouns by teachers and staff. Attorney General Marona and Ride Commissioner Angelica Fonte Green show their lack of concern for girls in the guidance that you all received recently. They think it's fine and fair for boys to compete with girls athletically, to occupy the same bathrooms as them, same spaces, violating their same spaces, their private spaces, excuse me, simply because they identify as girls. There are other ways to make sure that everybody is taken care of and not discriminated against. One can't simply decide not to obey federal law simply because one does not agree with it. There has been no injunction. This is simply guidance and very ill advised. Instead of heeding the bogus advice from the AG, this committee, in my view, needs to do two things. First, make sure that your Title IX policy, as Westerly and others have done, adheres to President Trump's 2020 ruling, which protects all people against discrimination based on sex, not gender identity. As I said, all populations are protected under other means, just not Title IX in this case. Exactly the way it was written, nineteen seventy-two P.S. Secondly, protect our girls. Dump the Ride Trans Guidance, which also violates federal law. If you don't, you're going to lose funding. You place this district in legal peril with OCR, Title IX suits. They will happen. You cannot continue to place our girls in unsafe, uncomfortable, and unlawful situations and positions. It's simple common sense, right versus wrong, and it is the law. Close. In spite of urgings from myself and others over the last few years, the policies, unbeknownst to you maybe, continue to sexualize kids. Policy continues to place.
Fifteen more seconds? Finish up, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, you cannot continue to place girls in unsafe, unlawful positions. You have no choice now. You have to obey the law. So I appreciate your time. It was a nice drive out here. Give a beautiful, beautiful community, truly, going to Central Rhode Island. Thank you for hearing me out, and please do the right thing when it comes to these kids. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Next person to speak is. Do I have Mr. Christina Carlson? Little Compton? And if you could just share your name, address, and your free speech?
I'm Christina Carlson. I live at one seventy West Bay Grove in Little Compton. And my son is a student at this school. There have been a lot of issues going on with the government recently with the Department of Education. And as a parent of both of my children, actually, who attended this school, I would like to say that the gains that this school has made in inclusivity and acceptance have been at the cutting edge of pedagogy, and they are something that we should be proud of and protect. I've heard from friends who have been students here in the years past, when it wasn't as accepting of students with different sexualities, and their experience was awful in school. Schools should be a welcome and opening environment for education, not for politicization. And, you know, the issue stuck around because he made comments about girl's sports. A lot of our teams are co-ed. So I'm not really even sure that his comrades actually apply to Little Compton. And as a parent of a boy who at one point had extremely long hair, I don't, I'm not threatened by whether a teacher uses the child's preferred pronouns or not, as long as the educational environment is welcoming and focused on pedagogy. And I also really don't care what bathrooms they use. I mean, it's such a small issue that doesn't really, again, apply to pedagogy. I don't think that girls are at risk from people attacking their bathrooms. I mean, more than boys are at risk, people attacking their bathrooms. But bullying is a real issue. And I think that at the heart of what Little Compton has succeeded in doing in the last few years has been to make an opening, welcoming environment where bullying is not tolerated. And I appreciate that as a parent of students in this school district. Thank you. And I speak.
Thank you, Christina.
I didn't sign anything. I'll sign something. I wasn't.
You can all out. You can have your, you can certainly have your three minutes.
I was planning on speaking to me shots.
Just, yeah, name and address, and she'll start the clock on.
Fifteen peanut plain Little Compton, whatever. Many of us spoke probably a year and a half ago about the policy. I agree with everyone is love. I thought I went to school here. My dad thought I went to school here. My kids thought I went to school here. My grandchildren are in school here. I don't think it's discriminatory. I think that it's not. I don't like the idea of boys going in the girls' room, girls going in the boys' room, and y'all along. I just don't like it. Provide a place. I have a client that's a teacher in Providence. We said if that was in place and enforced in this school every day. I mean, it's just. There was many people that spoke up about it, and it was approved. And I think it's still in place. And I don't think that that part of it should be in place. As far as sports and stuff, yeah, it's always co-ed, and everybody loves everybody. And you can have long hair, and you can do what you want to with your bodies. But I do think there needs to be a line. There are males and females. No matter how you identify, you're still different. And I wouldn't have been comfortable. So I mean, I went to a Romeo in Texas where you go in and it's all open urinal. I wasn't even comfortable with that, with all girls being in there. You know, I just, I'm old fashioned. I'm getting old, I guess, and I'm out of touch. But I just don't like that. And I know many people feel the same way. There's nothing about not loving or caring for other people. Sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else? All right, moving right along. We will go to item six point one, Spotlight and Excellence. The report from the winter and upcoming spring activities from Principal McKinnon.
Thank you, Chair Personality and members of the school committee. John will get this up in a second. So last week, we had our Wellness Week here at school. I have to thank Ms. Mary Elizabeth Miller and Ms. Noel Cannon and the people at the Tiverton Little Compton Prevention Coalition for putting a well-thought-out week together. Highlights included in the center there, a basketball, playground basketball legend from Brooklyn, New York, Blackjack Ryan, who thrilled the kids with some basketball skills and just a good story. But it was a week full of a lot of movement, healthy foods, and water-infused drinks. And again, shouting out, shout out to Ms. Miller and Ms. Cannon and J.R. Nelson from the Tiverton Prevention Coalition for putting that all together. This past Saturday night, John will get to that in a second. Our health phys ed teacher, Jason Ford, was the WMS Wilbur McMahon School representative for the Tiverton Little Compton Lions Club at a dinner at Whites of Westport. Jason is a sixteen-year veteran here at Wilbur McMahon School. He has his finger on everything in the building. And when I say that, he is a, he's an outstanding person. He's our athletic director, soccer coach. We do restorative practice, and he's probably one of our finest restorative practice clinicians. So a shout out to Jason and his family. Little Compton, Wilbur McMahon probably had the largest amount of people there. And that's with some of Jason's family unable to make it because of sickness. But it was, we had about twenty members there that day for Jason's award. Next, next photo. Just a quick, this is our grade three, Ms. Corrigan's library class. I acted out the book, The Frog Prince. This was last week. I'll tell you, there's quite a few characters in that class. And when I say characters, they did an outstanding job with their inflection and kind of telling the story of the Frog Prince. Just a great job. The next photo. Our third and fourth grade, about two weeks ago, went to, not the Zeitarian, that I believe was New Bedford High School, actually, where the New Bedford Symphony Orchestra performed for them. We've been working with a group from the New Bedford Symphony Orchestra on ecosystems and music and how they combine. This was the final installment with the New Bedford Symphony Orchestra. And this is part of the Arts in School Grant that was given to us. That is part of our culture here through some, some people in town. Just an outstanding job with that. Next photo. We are in the process of an advocacy day. And I'm going to have Amy possibly talk, even though she doesn't know about it. She's going to talk a little bit about it in a little bit. So our eighth grade is completing. They're in the, the tail end, the home stretch of the community project. That's the action phase. We're going to be having an advocacy week, which I believe all members of our school committee received an invitation on March twenty-seventh. Amy, I'm going to let you talk a little bit about that, if you would.
Advocacy Day is first, the first one this year, well, first one ever for Wilbur School. It's our third year of doing the community projects. This year, we are able to like fully implement the projects the way they are meant to be. So in Phase Three that you see, which is the action phase, so that's students are either going out into the community and volunteering. There's a group building a beehive. So now is the time where they're actually, you know, where the rubber meets the road, and they're actually making their differences and learning their experiences. Advocacy Day is during this phase, and that's the day where we are inviting in the local organizations or any, or actually, this year, our students branched out. So we have some Providence organizations, Fall River, Tiverton. We've invited them to come in and see the project because. So I'll use my group for an example again. They are building a beehive, but that's not their project. That's the action piece. So on Advocacy Day, you'll be hearing about the presentation, meaning the, Jeff put me on the spot here. You'll be hearing about the advocacy part of their project. So the why behind it, like the bigger concept and the global context connection that they have with their project. So we're really excited. We've gotten a really good response. The kids are excited, and I hope that you all can join us. It'll be great.
Miss Lott, as you guys know, is our, is our IB coordinator. Our community project coordinator is Mr. Lee Torres. I think that's on the next page. You might have a picture of him right in the middle somewhere. This, this was an example of some of the students presenting to their classmates, their eighth grade classmates, some of their projects. And it was an opportunity for them, as we all know, getting up and speaking in front of particularly classmates. There's probably nothing more frightening. But they did a very good job of it. This was one of the earlier things that we did with the projects that took place, I believe, in January. So again, they're in the process of March twenty-seventh, really presenting to the community. And we're hoping to have on April twenty-fourth the opportunity for them to present to the staff members and the students here in school. Okay? Next photo. These are some of the posters, awareness that the students have put out. You know, Amy talked about the Beehive project, which we all know bees are becoming extinct. And one of the things they're going to talk about is how the importance of bees with the ecosystem around.
Yes, and I did gather my train of thoughts and what I wanted to explain about advocacy. Yes, and I did gather my train of thoughts and what I wanted to explain about advocacy day is that that's the day where students are going to be explaining the why behind their projects. Um, and I lost my train of thought. Probably just that.
That's good. You're fine.
Yeah, one last piece. I was very excited about this project, so I'm trying to remember everything, but I don't think I will right now. Do I sit down? It's free, yes, yes. I'm sorry. So the projects, this is what I was going to say. The projects are determined based on student interest. So like what they're interested in and then they connect that somehow to a need in the community. And for eighth grade students, that's a really big task to have to do. And they're doing a great job with it. Advocacy day is the day where they can actually share like the really fun part where they are actually working at animal shelters and having made sales and whatnot. Yeah.
Just a couple of things coming up. Um, the week our students in kindergarten, uh, through second grade will be seeing a performance by the Newport Contemporary Ballet, which we have a connection with. They're here every Wednesday with five or six of our students and they'll be seeing the ballet out of crayons quitting. They had a great time last year. This is a continuation of that ballet. Our first tech and our first Lego team, that's our robotics team will be, uh, they're heading down to the University of Rhode Island on Friday, watch, uh, robotics on a, on a grand scale. Um, it's, it's basically the FRC, uh, district tournament that'll be taking place at Keeney Gym on Friday. So we have about twenty four students heading down there on Friday. Our sixth graders are going on a tour of RISD, uh, at the end of the month and our seventh graders will be going to the Boston Museum of Fine Arts. Uh, I believe in early April. Actually, it might be the end of March because we'll be testing in, uh, in April. Uh, and of course our eighth graders preparing for their trip to Washington DC. And finally, uh, don't let this, uh, smile fool you. Um, she is a very poised, confident sixth grade student who will be taking, uh, taking the stage at the Gamm Theater in Warwick, I believe it is, on Saturday. Uh, Annie finished in second place last year at the state spelling bee. Um, the reason I bring this up to you is don't be surprised if, uh, we'll be finding some money to send her to Washington DC as I have, I'm very confident. She's been working very hard at this, uh, training since, uh, uh, March of last year for this. So I, I truly believe she's going to, uh, she's going to rock the world on, uh, on Saturday. So good luck to Annie, um, at the state spelling bee in Warwick. And that is everything that's happening at Wilbur McMahon School.
Thank you, Principal. Thank you, Miss Lott. Looking forward to attending that event and good luck, Annie. Yeah. Clearly. Ready to go. Superintendent report, will she be joining us or do we have a next superintendent this evening? All right, Mr. McNamara, no lead off batter to the cleanup.
Mr. McNamara, finance report. Let's hear the good stuff.
Well, it looks like we're getting close to getting a FY twenty four audit underway, hopefully completed by the end of April. So that, that's, that's a good thing. And, um, we have been contacted by the auditorium, so we'll be getting them information. Um, I think the school, I'll be sending mine in and the town should have this in the next couple of weeks. So I think that's, uh, moving ahead nicely. Uh, we will be meeting, uh, with the budget, uh, committee on Tuesday next week to, uh, go over the FY twenty six budget. And, uh, hopefully that meeting is going to be here at the school on Tuesday. As far as the current year, things are starting to come in to, uh, focus a little bit more. I think we're still looking at, um, a small deficit above fifty one thousand dollars for the year. We, um, probably will see some additional distributions hopefully coming in from both the, uh, Newport County Regional, but maybe also from, um, uh, the Collaborative, um, East Bay Collaborative as well too. Um, from the sale of the property. So I'm, I'm not sure when that distribution, if it's not going to be before year end, it should be shortly thereafter. Uh, otherwise everything seems to be on target. At this point, we're still, um, struggling to get information on electricity costs, the, uh, virtual net metering. We haven't received any billing from that credit through. Uh, but we haven't received any billing on that. So, uh, I've been working with the town and trying to get that information. The, um, issue that we, I see on the capital reserve and we have the, um, solar, which is in play and that one was going to generate a thirty percent investment credit. Um, I talked to, uh, some people in the solar industry, uh, they're waiting for some decisions from the Supreme Court. That's the way that's going to go forward. Uh, we had to register the project with the IRS, which I've done, um, but I haven't heard back. Of course, half of the IRS has been, uh, for a load, I think, but, um, so I don't know what's going to happen relative to that. So we're, we're keeping our eye out for that. In the event that we do not get the investment credit, I'll, I'll, I'll submit that for housing aid reimbursement. So we'll get something on that. But I'm still hopeful that we'll be able to get the full thirty percent of the credit on that, uh, on the project. Uh, other than that, I think all the, um, other items, the housing aid, we get paid the, uh, a hundred and eighty five from the town. We're still waiting for the fifty thousand from the auditorium project. Uh, but I'm hoping to get that, uh, before the end of the year.
Any words when the, when the Supreme Court's going to decide that? I mean, do they have a feel on it?
No, I mean, it's, it's part of a, a tax act. So I, I find it difficult that if projects have already been started that you, they wouldn't provide that, but there, there've been so many surprises with this administration that.
We look forward to your presentation next Tuesday. That was once again open to the public. Travis will be in this building.
It's a pretty good question.
Where are our credits stand with our net meter for, for here? Do we know?
Where the credit stand? We've received some, but um, I haven't received an electric bill from, uh, Rhode Island Energy for the last, um, four months.
For this building?
For this building. So we're following up with, um, so what happened with the, with the electricity that's being generated here, that's being sold. So it's, so I'm not sure how that arrangement is working at this point in time. In fact, I talked to Dr. Watt, uh, today and he was following up with Newport Renewables as well too, because they can see what we're generating in power.
Right.
Um, but I don't know whether they can see what we're using at this point in time. And the, I, I'm not sure what's happening with the virtual net metering, the project, which is in Warren. Theoretically, what, what of the way that works is that we'll see a credit on our bill, which I did see on some bills in September and October. So I see a virtual net metering credit. And I should be getting a bill for sixty five percent of that credit, which I then would charge the electricity expense to offset the the credit because we've got thirty five percent discount basically.
Right.
Uh, we haven't received any of those bills. Uh, I don't know if something's happening with that project or not, but you would think that if you're generating electricity and trying to sell it, they need to bill for it in order to get paid for it. So, um, and the town hasn't been getting anything as well either. So.
I'm just wondering why are we not receiving bills to be here for electricity?
That's it. I'm, I'm receiving a bill for meeting house lane just for that one small meter, but not for the big one. The last one I did receive had a zero balance on.
Have you had an opportunity to see what our output was compared to what our normal usages been in the past with the solar panels that we have now?
Um, no, I have, I haven't measured that. I guess we can, we can get that.
Yeah, I think, um,
Then I could, I could look at last year's.
But we can compare those bills that we have not received through our current production to find out where we fall as far as that goes. I know the solar company is also looking into additional consumption monitoring. Um, that would be an add on we could pursue that would tell us our actual, our. I don't know the status of that right now.
You just.
I think the, I'm sorry, Michael.
I was going to just say, you just hear everybody, uh, everybody's complaining about how expensive the utilities are, the electric bills are and what have you. And, and for us to not have an electric bill in four months, it makes you wonder what's going on.
That's probably a good thing because it's not a balance due.
Or it could be a big surprise.
I can't tell you, here today we have generated forty four megawatt hours of thirty four thousand kilowatt hours a year.
Yeah. So, so yeah, you have an application that.
We, we can see what the arrays producing currently. We cannot see what the entire building is consuming. We have to rely on the.
Interesting.
But we hadn't been using probably some neighborhood above thirty five thousand kilowatt hours a month.
You're saying Newport Renewables has like an application in which we can, because I mean, I can do that with my, with my home, but.
Yeah, I think there are additional capabilities that they were looking into. It's essentially an add on to our existing electrical system where we could see what we're consuming. School life.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, in real time, but I don't know the exact status of that right now.
Interesting. All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. McNamara. Onto our committee reports, policy subcommittee. Um, we are waiting on guidance. First off, we have no policies that are outstanding. They're in line with not only the federal level, but also the state level to this point. That being said, if there is guidance set forth by this administration, we will review any policies that would possibly subject the people of Little Compton to less protections and or litigation. At this time, there's been no guidance from the federal level. Is that my understanding? Sean?
Um, there has been, there has been executive orders, there has been changes.
Correct.
Uh, at the federal level, um, guidance from the Rhode Island Department of Ed has advised districts to remain the same relative to certain policies that were mentioned this evening.
I guess I was, uh, speaking upon, uh, Attorney General Bondi has not come after the state of Rhode Island for any guidances that we have in place.
Uh, not to my knowledge, no.
Correct. Okay. Item nine two, Portsmouth School Committee Liaison Report, Mr. Mark Fiesch.
Thank you again, Carolyn, for the notes. PSD School Committee met on Tuesday, February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Highlights from this meeting are available online. They have a meeting recording on YouTube if you're interested in watching it. Uh, as far as, uh, what we're reporting, the committee heard the latest updates on the PHS roof. Those updates will are, are on that recording. And there was a follow up communication about it. It's project ongoing. It's moving forward that repairing the roof. Uh, Dr. Ken, were these district updates included recent school and district events as well as information on the first few bus GPS system? Learn three sixty five map matters and twenty twenty five survey works. The business portion of the agenda, the committee approved the new strategic plan for twenty twenty five. Reviewed the second draft of the district's budget proposal for fiscal year twenty six. They voted on that last night. I'll report on that next month. Reviewed the twenty twenty five, twenty six school calendar draft. And the committee also approved the donation request from the Hathaway HPTA, a request to administer youth risk behavior survey at PHS and two other policies. And, uh, that is everything.
Thank you, Mark. Item nine three, Wellness Committee Liaison Report. Ms. Su Che, how are you?
Um, I'm good, thank you. And so we held our, well, it was my first help, um, wellness meeting on February thirteenth. Um, and it was a little bittersweet. Of course, that was the day we lost Jennifer Sylvia. Um, and she was at that meeting with us then. Um, and it was bittersweet because I was really excited about all the things that I heard that were happening in this school as far as, as wellness. You know, we had, um, presentations from Ride from the Department of Health. Um, our teachers gave reports on the farm to sea program. Student and family wellness, wellness. Everything was so positive. I think back to when my kids were here, you know, forty five years ago and all the things that I wished were happening then have taken a while, but they're happening now and it's really exciting to me. Um, so that said, the other bitter part of it is so many of those programs, and there's wonderful programs in the works, but so many of them may be on the chopping block and so many of the people that were here may already may not be back next month. So I'm just hoping that we can, um, get through this and continue to stay on a positive track for the great things that are going on.
Well said, Sue. Well said. Item nine four, Town Recreation Committee Liaison Report. Mr. Mark.
Thank you. Uh, I think the news coming out of the Recreation Committee for this month is the, um, activation of the, um, recreational field use, um, and, uh, littlecomptonri.org forward slash community slash recreation page that has, um, everything that you need to reserve your field or, um, park for the summer and, uh, is being updated as we speak with, um, all of the information that was on the last website. Um, again, uh, just right there on the town website, really, um, easy to navigate, um, all of the contact information to request usages there. There's no more forms, uh, you just, uh, either send an email or make a call, um, and it's all right there for you. Um, and then we bring it to the committee and, and get it on the calendar. Um, so I, I, I think uh, folks would enjoy, um, looking at the beaches section, the boat launching section, the parks, places of interest, along with the forums and calendars that have all been updated on the town website now. And it's all just sort of really makes sense and it's nice. There's still work to be done, uh, but the calendar is there, the skeleton's there. Um, uh, just a couple of little pieces of information to enter and, but everything's up and running. So you can request your, um, your, whatever you need, uh, you can put in that request now. Um, and we're moving forward with the, uh, pickleball tennis courts, um, had some good meetings with the designers, um, and, uh, all of that is moving forward. I think you also had some to add, Chair.
Yeah, we're going to be, uh, through this committee. Michael was one of the catalysts in this and Jonathan was also one of the catalysts in creating the donation of previously used school AV equipment to the Recreation Committee that will be set at the Little League Field. Um, so that there's a speaker system for not only music, but announcing the players as they come to bat, or if there's any events out there. Um, I know for years we've used mobile equipment. So this will be something that is fixed to the building, long term solution. Um, and I know I've spoken with the, uh, Little League and they're very excited to be able to have this for opening day, which is April the twelfth. We will get together offline and make sure that they have those materials available to them to mount. Um, or the Recreation Committee has those available, uh, materials available then to mount that equipment for that opening day.
And a new school, uh, scoreboard still moving forward, uh, which is nice. Yeah. So, uh, that's still happening.
Gymnasium.
Or the gymnasium.
Well, yes.
I'm sorry, gymnasium for, for, uh, through the Recreation Committee. Um, yeah.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you. Lots of good things happening there. Yeah. Item nine five, the Scholarship Subcommittee Report. So the Scholarship Subcommittee meets, uh, towards the end of, or middle of May. I believe at our deadline right now for receiving scholarships, is it still April thirtieth or did we extend that date?
I don't know if it's still April thirty.
It is still April thirty. Yeah, it gives us a little bit of one. We would like to present the scholarships for June. Um, as you know, that many of our students matriculate away to university. Um, come August and sometimes our, our meeting conflicts with that, with those dates. So, uh, if you do have a student that is a graduating senior. if you do have a student that is a graduating senior, they do not have to necessarily be at Portsmouth High School. They can be a Little Compton resident. They would like to apply for the scholarship, uh, we highly encourage them to do so. Last year, I think we only had eight, it was like eight of the twenty-four students that could have, eight of the twenty-six that could have applied. I'd love to see that number double. Um, and really the goal is to have anyone that is going to, uh, higher education to apply for this. Um, you have a, a great shot at getting a scholarship there, certainly offset some of the costs, uh, the growing costs of, of attending university.
One additional, um, please from the Rec Committee. Sorry, I just really wanted to recognize David Bernaglia, uh, and, and Carol Wardell for their help in getting that page going. Um, I didn't mean to make it, I have no technical skills. They really took care of all of it and, um, so it wouldn't have been enough without those guys and probably other people who I'm not aware of, but, but Carol and David for sure.
Excellent. Carol wears many hats. And David, thank you very much.
Travis, can I just follow up on the Portsmouth for a second?
Sure.
Jonathan, I sent you an email with three photos just now. Yeah, ten, like ten minutes ago. I was hoping to get it to you before this meeting started. I was, uh, parent reached out to me, wanted to talk about the, uh, Portsmouth. Um, I didn't know if you want to report on the start mark, but I guess the Rhode Island Art Education Association hosted a youth art contest for middle school students and high school students hosted this past weekend uh, at Rhode Island College. Three of our Little Compton students received awards at this event. And hopefully Jonathan can show the, the artwork. Sorry to put you on the spot, but. She's on. I'll read the names and then you can, we can figure this out with you. So it consisted of a, a senior, a junior and a sophomore. So Damon, uh, Owen, grade twelve was awarded the Wave Award Best in Printmaking, which is not this one. Uh, this one right here, I can speak to this is William Middleton, grade eleven, Wave Award Best in Abstract Art. This one right here is for Damon Owen. That's the Best in Printmaking. That one is, that's William Middleton's. Yes. And the first photo you had of.
Yeah.
Alana Moniz.
Alana Moniz, uh, Anchor Award recipient. So these are the three, um, awards that were given to Little Compton students from PHS.
Incredible.
Really nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Excellent. Action items. We will consider, discuss and vote to approve a five hundred dollar donation to Portsmouth High School, class of twenty twenty-five post-prom celebration. Do I have a motion to approve this donation?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think everyone, that's five oh. Yeah. That's a great event. Um, and it's important that we support after prom activities that are safe for our students. And, uh, this, this is one of them where it draws the children in to, to be in a safe environment for them not not making poor choices. Ten two. Consider, discuss and vote to approve Haley and Aldridge Consulting Services contract for Polly and the PPS Treatment System Design and Procurement Support. So this is a ultimately, this is the scope of work that is going to be laid out. However, this committee did, as, as did the council, vote to approve the five hundred fifty thousand dollar bond and as, uh, five hundred fifty, five hundred thousand dollar grant. Excuse me, grant. Oh, my God. Grant, grant, not bond. Bond is a loan, grant is free, is money. Okay, thank you. Thank you for correcting me every time, please. Um, so this has been approved by both this committee and the town council. The time is of the essence. We do believe that we will be reimbursed for these funds. However, the times are changing at the federal level and if we, uh, drag our feet, we could lose out and we don't want to be going before the council requesting a bonding of the taxpayer. So this grant, uh, this approved work, I believe this first scope it's approximately a hundred and twenty-one thousand, just over a hundred and twenty.
Get to, Chair, if I can.
Please.
Add on, uh, so this committee and you're correct, the town council, uh, engaged Haley and Walbridge uh, for work to improve a, uh, well system that's on the property here in order to mitigate, uh, certain, uh, chemicals in the, in the water supply that feeds the, uh, the grounds here and other municipal buildings. That original agreement covered the entire scope of the work and how, uh, we would perceive whether it was, you know, legal boilerplate as well as just the general plan moving forward. This now, what's coming before you is the next step in that overall process. It's really, uh, to sum it up in just a short phrase, the design phase of this process. So you see that the agreement is really divided into three portions, task one, task two and task three. Um, pre-design planning, P-FAS treatment, system design and supporting documents and, uh, procurement, uh, support. So those, those are, it's the scope of the work, um, uh, that this called a sub-agreement, uh, lays out and what, when you look down at the fee estimate of a hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars, what that money will be paying for all the designing and, uh, procurement support that is needed to move towards the ultimate uh, construction and implementation phase. And as you pointed out, Chair, this is all part of that five hundred thousand dollar, um, grant amount. Uh, so the way that works is, uh, we will submit, uh, the invoices that we receive to the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. They go through a process at the Rhode Island Department of Health, um, for approval and then ultimately, uh, submitted to the federal government for reimbursement. And that has been the point of contention and where Lori, myself and John have gone back and forth with Haley and Aldridge as well as with the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank because as everyone here is likely aware, there is a lot of changes occurring at the federal level. It is my understanding that the grant, um, has been subject to uh, litigation here in, uh, in the Rhode Island Federal Court. With that said, as of right now, there is a, a preliminary injunction in place requiring the federal government to continue funding uh, these grants, including this grant. So what we have done to an attempt to mitigate any potential change that, uh, may occur in the future is we have spoken with Hall, Haley and Aldridge and we are invoicing the work at a, we are going to agree to invoice the work at a bi-weekly basis as opposed to a monthly basis or even, you know, longer gap of time. So we can move those invoices much quickly, quicker, much more quickly through the, uh, uh, state process and get those reimbursements. Uh, so if something were to happen where, uh, the federal government were to shut off those funds, we would not be left with a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar potential hole, um, that would be, be filled. Ultimately, and I'm trying to be alarmist, it does seem that right now this is smooth sailing ahead. Time is of the essence. I think it is important to move, move forward with this this evening. What we're asking for is simply approval of the contract and giving, uh, the superintendent of the ability to sign off on it. We're gonna have this, we're gonna continue to have discussions around, um, the payment schedule and the invoicing schedule. But if you give approval tonight, uh, for a final legal review as well as the superintendent to be, be the signatory, uh, we will continue our discussions with Haley and Aldridge, but won't have to come back to you once we get to a point where, and we feel comfortable signing off on it. And it would back. My request tonight is the motion being approve the contract subject to final legal review and superintendent sign off.
Travis. Yes. Ask a question while you're doing that?
Yeah.
So it's my understanding this is T and M.
Is that it?
T and M.
T and M.
Times and materials.
Yes.
Beyond this original hundred and twenty. So this one hundred and twenty is just basically for the planning process.
That's correct.
That's all this is. But the actual construction portion of that, that's gonna be done. That will be done on a bid process. So we will know exactly what the cost of that is at that point.
That's correct.
Is when I see time and materials and I'm like, I didn't know that was, if they were going towards construction, the construction phase of that as well.
But they, they spent a lot of time in terms of putting the budget together. So we've got a not-to-exceed amount that we can't go over that.
And that's that five hundred.
Yeah. And we think that's gonna be enough to complete the project and do some of the other things that we're looking to do.
Do we have an idea of what this is anticipated to cost without going off the bit, I understand, but I mean, do they anticipate?
Well, I think the whole, uh, grant total is about five, five and change. So and we've got a budget together for that, so which was approved by the Infrastructure Bank.
Right. That's what our grant is, but do we know what it's gonna cost for us here up and beyond the one twenty? Doesn't mean that it's gonna cost us five, so I'm not asking.
Total amount of the grant is the max that we're gonna, we're not gonna be out of pocket, that's what we're gonna be able to spend on this project.
No, I, I, I understand that. I was just wondering what was that project gonna cost? If it doesn't cost, I understand what you're saying. It's not gonna cost us anything here locally. Do we anticipate what that, this project will cost is what I'm asking.
That's a good question.
It won't cost more than the total grant.
Right.
Which is under the guideline, I mean, Haley and Aldridge know this. Just like, you know, we're, we're operating under the same assumption that they're operating on. They're not gonna come back and say, oh, you know, we ran the figures and it's a million two to do this.
The grant application also had, uh, some due diligence worth that the N G S did, so that they had a pretty good idea what the, the numbers were gonna be.
We don't have that. That's what I'm asking. Like, is this a two hundred thousand dollar project? Is this a three hundred thousand? Three hundred thousand dollar project that we're getting on the bubble is what I'm asking.
Five hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct. That's what this committee, yes. That's what this committee and the council approved, a grant up to five hundred fifty thousand dollars. It's really on the engineers. Haley and Aldridge and those that implement the system. Tell us where that number falls. So as I understand it, I'm looking for a motion to approve the contract for final legal review and superintendent approval. Subject to. Subject to. Final legal review and subject to.
Approval of the contract, subject to final legal review and superintendent sign off.
Approval of the contract. Subject to. Final legal review and superintendent sign off. Excellent. Do I have a motion to approve the contract subject to final legal review and superintendent sign off?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
This is unanimous.
Correct. Five zero. Thank you all and we will be continually updated on this. We will, once the final contract, well, this contract has to come before it will be updated. You'll be given a copy. Excellent. All right. Now, item ten three. School calendar. I tried my little no power. Travis, what do you think? I think we should always go back to school after Labor Day. Everyone covered their ears when I said that out loud. Fortunately, we follow the Portsmouth High School. So last night Portsmouth ratified this. They approved it despite our best efforts of telling them we would have liked to. Um, so I do have a couple of questions about it. Uh, there is a PD day on Thursday, October second. Is it possible to make that PD day a Friday? So we have a long weekend for parents.
Did you scroll up anything?
The second, the second is Yom Kippur. I think you're talking about Thursday, or Friday.
It's Thursday.
So it would be, it's a kind of a baked in holiday. So the students are not here anyway. If adding a PD day on a Friday.
Too shy. All right. I didn't.
You know, reduce the number of school days that month and also bump the last day of school.
Back a day.
Yeah. So right now it's, um, the hundred and eightieth day is June seventeenth. If you bump it to the eighteenth.
The nineteenth of June is Juneteenth.
So there won't be.
Yes, which means if there is a snow day, you know, into the following week, June twenty-second, before you're getting out.
So three is now, our kids would go to school August twenty-eighth.
Twenty-seventh, actually.
Twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth.
Okay, twenty-seventh.
Seventeenth and twenty-eighth. Then it's a.
Four day.
Weekend.
Yes, Labor Day weekend would be a four day.
Gosh, it just.
How does this coincide with Massachusetts?
Oh, I don't know. I'm just, I know it coincides Portsmouth High School.
Yeah.
It's where our kids go. That's what I'm most concerned about.
That's, that's exactly it. We're not, I don't know if Mass is necessarily released, uh, any schedules yet. You know, their April vacation is always around Patriots Day, um, which I think next year it does look like Patriots Day, you know, we're heading. It is a week later than I think it normally is, the April vacation.
And the December, the winter break.
Is a two week.
Is sixteen days.
Yep.
Incredible. Incredible stretch of time. Well, I mean, I get the holiday piece, so forget, cancel that. And I mean, certainly not interested in, you know, while I would love to go, I'm, I'm just talking out loud really. I'd love to go after Labor Day every year. There was a time when this community actually didn't go back to school until after the first frost or harvest, as I understood. That's Stork Society. Those days are long gone, but that said, I do not want to, and I mean, parents and committee members, correct me if I'm wrong here, I certainly don't want, I wanna try to prevent us going into that twenty-second, twenty-third week of June. Now there is extenuating circumstances with snow. We got a blizzard of, they're putting a calling it the Blizzard of twenty-sixth or whatever, and then we might be in that circumstance, but currently we are not and we would get out on the seventeenth, which I think bodes well for a robust summer. So I mean, does anyone else have any concerns when looking at this, while keeping in mind that we, this is really, we're kind of second fiddle here. Portsmouth did approve this last night. Our kids do, uh, bus up there, uh, for high school. So if we were to really disrupt the apple cart, it would be more for our K to eight students. And to be honest with you, I'm, I'm really not interested in doing that. Unless somebody can convince me otherwise.
I.
Certainly open up.
What's April third? What's April 3rd, please?
April 3rd is Good Friday.
And there was a date that was circled red, that's.
That's the end of the trimester.
March 17th.
17th, December 1st.
Stop, like somebody sat down and did this.
What's, what's the pushers that we have to do this tonight?
Well, I mean, what, if we're not going to change it, I mean, let's, let's talk about what, what changes. I asked about that PD day, it's Yom Kippur. So even if we put it to Friday, they're missing a day, you're going to the 18th regardless. We start on the 27th, 28th, so that's two days there. Even if you say, well, let's start September 1st, Yom Kippur stays the same, that puts us to the 22nd, because the 19th is a holiday in June. So it's just like a it's a weird crux that you're in because of the way the holidays fall. The, the positive side, as I stated, I mean, you get the 20, the 20th to the 4th, December 20th to January 4th, is holiday vacation. It's a long Christmas break. So I know that there's several families in this community that do travel over that period of time. That's certainly a robust swath of time to take advantage of. The third, as you noted, Michael, is Good Friday. November 11th, Veterans' Day. You get the five days for Thanksgiving. I mean, it's just, there's not a lot of wiggle room. It's not like they're coming in. And then also Portsmouth approved this exact calendar last night. So I thought if there was like any wiggle room, it would be like one day, but. Anyone else from any other committee members?
Has, has this district ever done a half-day the day before Thanksgiving?
Ride frowns upon half-days. It's not to say, I mean, you can apply for it, but they, they're not really too pleased when you, when you do. I know the high schools, when it comes to final exams and mid-year exams, they do have to check, I believe, with Ride to make sure they can do it. They, they don't, you don't take too kindly to it.
That's very ironic and how it's acceptable to sit in front of a computer on a snow day for three hours, call that a full day, but they don't allow you to do a half a day in person.
Go ahead, Chair.
I know one of the advantages to approving a draft of the agenda is so that families know when the vacations are happening at the school year. And we have had instances in past years where there have been changes to the calendar that pop up in April or May, and it comes before the committee again for review. So this draft is on the agenda so that really families will get an idea of what's coming up.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, you know, the reason, it seems soon and rushed, and you know, Portsmouth, as you said, just approved theirs. This is based on that.
Yeah.
To answer that question, you brought it up.
No, it's, it's good. And I also think that that's important, that our families get enough time.
As I wonder what, didn't, did Tividen do abbreviated February vacation? Was it?
Yeah, they did, they eliminated the February vacation. I think they extended, they might have had a PD day on a Friday, had Monday President's Day off and maybe the following day, but then went back in school, Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. But I think they have since gone back to a February vacation.
Just wondering how we could be creative so that families could have until after Labor Day to go back.
Not, not for nothing.
Families would not be happy.
Correct, while, while ski families would not be happy, I would be happy to put that out there. I mean, I don't want a, a, that's a great idea. But I do agree with Amy, with the ski families and knowing doing youth sports, we lose a ton of kids that week for athletics. So if that would be something people are interested in, I would love to hear feedback from parents, because that is certainly something that we could amend to extend the summer. I think when we live in this coastal community, I mean, that's like, that's why I live here. So I'm somewhat surprised that like Equidne Island, when you're thinking of local businesses, I'm thinking of high school kids, I'm thinking of ice cream shops. Like, guess what? They're going to be closed before Labor Day because all the high school, I mean, college kids are long come Labor Day. But now your high school kids are in school Wednesday before Labor Day. So there's your, there's your, your skills, your.
I think Newport does go back after Labor Day just for that reason, because.
Makes sense, it's a, you know, they got to capture that revenue for the businesses that are open seasonally. So that's, that's where my head's at with this. I would like to be creative, just not under the gun. So if we do get enough parent parental feedback in this, whether it's through the summer or it leading into next year, or after approving of this, well, while it's a draft, you know, if 100 families reach out and say, take my February break, then I think we could reconvene. But as of this point, I'm with Amy, thinking a lot of families go away for February break. There's a lot of ski people in our community, and I am very sensitive to that. But if we could get creative and extend the summer, I'm also open to hearing suggestions and ideas from the community.
Another consideration is that we have families with students in both schools.
Correct.
Portsmouth High School and Oliver McNamara.
Yeah.
That's another.
And that, and that's really why I don't like to upset the apple cart, right?
You're also looking at running buses extra.
I wonder if Portsmouth would be open to this, because I, I feel like we can't be the only ones thinking, you know, let's extend the summer to the day after Labor Day. Just talking out loud now. What are you, you're saying, you know?
I'm, I don't know how much of Portsmouth's decision-making is anchored by, Jack, you could talk to the R I I.
No, I don't think it is, no.
Okay, I was thinking fall sports might be able to get a kickoff, I don't know.
Without totally scrapping this, going from square one, we've got a pretty there's been some good ideas here, some considerations.
Why don't we put it out, though? If we put it out.
Well, it's just in a draft, as Carolyn said, if there is changes. So we'll approve this, I, I'm thinking we approve this draft. Parents get it on their radar. We have these, there's people in this room, ourselves included, people that are watching online. If they're like, wow, I, I would love to lose February vacation or have three days, so my kids can go back the day after, and there's outreach. Democracy, the people voice their concerns, their things. We can, this, that said, the travel piece comes into play, and I need to hear from Mr. Robby on those calls.
Yeah, I, I, so I think all good discussion points, I think realistically, taking away a portion of February vacation, I've seen it happen in other districts. That's not a, we're going into this school year, we're going to make that change. That is a one- to two-year-out
Yeah.
discussion, because while you may have, you could fill up this room with, with families that say, we, we don't want our February vacation. And how many more families that aren't here that are thinking the exact opposite? That's just going to upend the apple cart, as, as you said.
Correct.
And not to say that it isn't worth consideration, I just think that consideration is on a much more, much greater time scale than what you all are discussing right now, which is changes from now and the end of the school year.
Excellent. And, and so yes, parents watching at home or those here, feel free to voice these concerns, and we can, I would think, make a long-term plan. But I'm very tentative to go against what is already drafted and in place at our sister school that we share everything with.
And another consideration, of course, I'm going to be talking about is our staff. Right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know how they do their early days. So now we would, no, 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 because I'm very, I'm understanding, you know, like 25, 26, our teachers are in here for PD days. But now you start, let's say, the second, so now the teachers are in here the 27th, 28th, or whatever, or the 28th, 29th. It's just like a.
They do come from granting to me the 25th and 26th, then the students come on the 27th and 28th. And everyone would enjoy the four-day weekend.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's better than like kicking it to the next week and figuring out when the teachers.
And I was.
And I do want to be sensitive to the staff.
Yeah, if, if there was going to be some consideration of altering the February vacation, we would absolutely want to.
Get them involved.
Um, they're, yeah, they're.
Hundred percent.
Being in leadership.
There was a bill set forth by the legislature. Anyway, any more discussion on this item? Or do I have a motion to consider a 2025, 2026 school, Little Compton School Department calendar draft? So moved. But a second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Are there any requests for information from administration or legal councils? Any committee members?
As far as the follow-up on our tuition discussion, and as far as the, in light of the recent communications, as far as how many homeschoolers that we do have.
Correct. Sean, is that possible? Can you share the homeschool number tonight, or is that something?
I, I would not have that information this evening, but we can, I can convey that to Lori and get that information, you're looking for raw numbers in terms of.
Yeah, with our homeschool population, we could have some outreach from there. We want to make sure they're included and our community is inclusive with those that homeschool their children. And then in terms of the tuition, I believe that will be on next month's agenda, following Budget Committee approval and hearing from the Budget Committee their thoughts are and that kind of stuff. Just kind of gauge it. All right, if there's no other items, I will consider a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent, thank you all for joining.